All right, going to go ahead and call the September Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Again, good morning. Thanks everyone for joining the Board of Commissioners meeting. We are broadcasting this meeting live on a virtual platform. For your reference, all information shared today is available online at www.nraa.us in the Board of Commissioners section. We will allow public comment near the end of today's agenda, and virtual participants will have an opportunity to raise their hands to comment. They may also use the chat feature to make their comment as well, and I will share those prompt instructions closer to that time. Again, thank you for attending today's meeting. We have a pretty full agenda, including three presentations and then three closed session items. To my fellow commissioners, welcome back from our August summer recess. Unfortunately, during that time, we experienced a significant amount of criminal activity within our communities, which has impacted the lives of our residents as well as the lives of our frontline employees. Out of concern, Vice Chair Albert and I met with the executive staff and the frontline staff at Youngs Terrace, who, like frontline employees in our other communities, have witnessed traumatic criminal acts in the broad daylight. We wanted to offer encouragement and sought ways in which the agency could address the increase of significant events within our communities. Mr. Jackson will speak in more detail about the outcomes of those meetings. And now I invite your comments, if any, on the minutes from the July 15th board meeting. Any comments? Hearing done, I welcome a motion to approve.
So move.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Caron?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Benaski?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Masaccio?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Move on now to the executive director's comments. Ron?
Good morning, commissioners. I just wanted to follow up on an item that Don touched on was our meetings with both Don and Alfonso, as well as we had a follow-up meeting with some of our frontline staff, specifically the staff at Youngs Terrace. And I wanted to report to you some of the outcomes of the meeting. The first meeting being that the meeting with the executive staff, you know, we were, you know, sitting watching. We would get the emails from the significant events that were occurring, and they were occurring at an alarming number. And, you know, us administrators not really, you know, first reaction is to, you know, run to Norfolk police and see what they can do. But, you know, when our conversations with Don and Alfonso, we realized that there was a role that we could play in terms of being able to provide more support to the community, bring more attention to it, provide opportunities for us to be more visible in the community as well. And when I say "community," I'm talking about not only our residents, but also our staff. Our staff has witnessed a couple of our properties, our developments, where staff actually in broad daylight have witnessed these criminal activities and have been impacted by that as well. We had to follow up counseling with those impacted staff. But anyway, I just wanted to go over some of the outcomes of the meeting. And I'd like to thank Kim, Donna, and Karen for leading this effort and working with me on this. In terms of addressing the safety, sort of the tactical kind of things in our community as well as the community support, these are a number of things that have come out of our meetings, what we could do to address crime and safety issues and important items within our community. A community engagement event is planned to be held on Monday, October 25th in Digstown to address mental health awareness among our youth and young adults. And if you recall, that's where we had the one homicide in that community of one of our youth in that community. So we just wanted to make sure that we had provided support. And I know it's primarily geared toward youth, especially during the summer, where there wasn't a lot of, really, activity that they could be involved with. We just want to make sure that we are visible, that we're offering support for youth in those communities, especially in regards to mental health. We also meeting with Centerra's Foresight Program. It's a possible alignment with NRHA's Care Network. Participate in a regional forum with State Attorney General Mark Haring to discuss funding to reduce gun violence with our community. And when we talk to NPD, that's one of the primary sort of drivers of the, I would say violent incidents is gun violence. It is just so accessible now, especially within our communities. It's really impacted just the prevalence of weapons and guns within our community. That we're just trying to figure out a way of working within NPD that how we could address that or sort of mitigate or reduce access to that. We know we can't do that ourselves, to at least bring awareness to it so that we can work with available resources to be able to reduce the access to guns within our community. Also create a network of immediate access to crisis intervention services, especially following significant events. And like I said before, it's not only for our residents, but also for our employees that experience these events. More opportunities for in-person dialogues and meetings. That's sort of been a challenge all throughout the pandemic. You know, we, for example, it's sort of ironic that we had planned for the National Night Out events, and I think that was the first week of August where we had planned that. But because of the sort of increasing prevalence of COVID in the community, it also went apart because of the amount of criminal activity within the community that we really couldn't carry on with the National Night Out events, which we saw that as being sort of a kickoff to be able to strategize and address some of the criminal activities that were going on in the community. Fortunately, we had to cancel that. But we're still seeking ways to hold community events in a safe manner, still try to make, let residents and staff know that their support system is in place to help them through these, any type of crisis that they may experience. A strategic relocation of security staff within the Calvert and Oakley Forest areas. Staff has been primarily housed within this particular, within this building here, but we thought it would be better if they were out, actually out in the communities instead of being here. Not that they actually were stationed here all the time, but we thought that having a permanent presence out in the communities would be helpful as well. Flexible scheduling of security staff, safety staff to address issues in the community after typical work hours. Anticipated execution of third-party armed security contracts to provide roaming patrols in all six family communities. Upgrade security cameras in Calvert. Also web-based camera access, which would allow remote access by NRHA staff as well as Norfolk NPD. Upgrade to web-based function anticipated for all communities. And also enhancement of resident-citizen confidential tip line, which we constantly heard that, that even with the availability of being able to report crimes anonymously, residents still felt like that there was a way for them, for it to be publicly known that they reported on particular crimes. So we just, we need to figure out a way to make sure that they understand that whatever, what's the reporting mechanism, that they will still remain anonymous by reporting any criminal activity. Because this, obviously, we can't curtail this unless we have their assistance in this. Increased presence of CRO officers in our family communities. Enhance data analysis of significant events mapping to show similarities or possible connections in conjunction with Norfolk police. And there's a couple of other things that we're looking at as well. But, you know, we realize that we can't remain idle, and we can't feel like we're helpless just because we're not, you know, we're not police or security officers. But there's definitely a role that we as administrators and managers can play within our communities to help address crime and also be supportive for our community. The second meeting that we had with Commissioner Masaccio and Albert, we had a meeting on August 18th with the Youngs Terrace staff. And that was one of the staff that had been, actually been witness to a criminal act in broad daylight. So we wanted to follow up. As we know that they were actually at the event that we had to send staff home because they were so traumatized by what had happened. So the three of us felt that it, just in terms of being encouraging and supportive to the staff, we really wanted to listen to some of their concerns. And so there were, we wrote down the number of questions. There was really some frank discussion that we had, honest discussion. And if Don and Alfonso wanted to follow up on that, they're welcome to do that. But we wanted to make sure that we followed up on their questions. And we were able to provide answers to. For example, the first question that was asked was about gunshot gun violence, where the employee said that they really enjoy what they do, but they're having to watch their surroundings all the time when they're out. And this is, like I've mentioned before, the couple of incidents that happen in broad daylight. They haven't even have to be concerned about their safety doing their job in broad daylight. And so what can be done as far as management in terms of helping them feel a little bit safer as they're carrying on with their jobs throughout the day? And we are working on addressing those concerns by installing safety features in the community, including cameras and increased armed security contracts through armed security contract patrols. We also continue to work with the Norfolk police and CROs, encouraging staff to access counseling and supportive services through A P. And I'm not going to re-allow them with just a sample. Another question was signage for cars to let police know who they are in case there is an incident occurring and the police don't mistake them for being involved. We have some draft magnet signs that we're working up that are possibly used in responding to after-hour calls. Staff are reminded to contact the duty supervisor immediately if any event occurs within the community. Duty supervisor will also attempt to notify police of their presence in the community. And then just as just the last question, not the last of the questions, but just, like I said, it's just a sample of the questions just to give you a sense of some of the topics that were brought up by staff. They felt that in an event, an emergency, and it took too long for the executive team to come out and meet with them. And one of the things that I've done is that whenever there's, whenever there is a significant event in our communities that either myself or one of the two deputies, that we will be the first ones to respond once we get, once we get the all clear to help facilitate any resources that are needed. So that's going to be our policy going forward whenever there's an event that occurs. So those are, and like I said, we provided answers. It's just a matter of between Don and Alfonso how we'd like to follow up with the staff on providing answers to their questions. So that was pretty much it. And I didn't know if you wanted to wait to your comments, your comments to talk about, because I have one other item if you wanted to go ahead and finish that.
Yeah, no, I'll speak on a whole nother issue at that time.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last thing I want to talk about. In recognition of the community advocacy and relationship building that is facilitated by DALL-E, DALL-E by our resident-led organization, the authority would like to invite our tenant management councils or T M Cs and our advisory councils to be our guests at our next October 16th board meeting, Board of Commissioners meeting. We will formally acknowledge our resident leaders during the meeting. The council president will be invited to join the board. The group will be invited to join us in the boardroom for a special presentation. We will assemble the other executive council members in a remote location in this building and have them view the meeting, the board meeting with our, from our online platform. Following the board meeting, I will invite the commissioners and select staff to join me for a brief reception on the first floor. More details will be made available to the board members and staff prior to the next month's meeting. In addition, we will highlight NRHA staff at the November Board of Commissioners meeting. It is our goal to carve out time in each of our board meetings to spotlight the work and efforts taking place in our communities. So that's the next month's meeting. We're going to have the T M C and then having some, like a reception down at the first floor. And then a follow-up meeting will be highlighted, some of the efforts of staff in our meeting.
Just to get everyone, on your presentation, you just say the next meeting is the 21st of October. That is incorrect. It is the 14th of October.
Fourteenth.
Somewhere along the way, it got put to 21st, and then we moved it, and then you got to move it. So it is the 14th, okay?
And that's all.
All right. Just to follow up on what Ron said, we did have, the meeting was very, very interesting to me to see the folks in person and their real concerns. I mean, these weren't just, "I'm scared." These were based upon actual events that they had witnessed. That once you hear from them, it becomes much more real than just, you know, "I saw something happen." So, and again, they were very open as to what they thought we could do. And interestingly enough, there was some back and forth in between even the employees about, "No, they shouldn't do that. They should do this." So it's a very ongoing discussion about what to do if I'm working somewhere and somebody gets shot right in front of me. So, and again, I think the thing that struck me the most was this was in broad daylight. So it wasn't like at night, it was middle of the day.
Do we have any, were there any insights discovered about the genesis of all this? Was it temperature-related, COVID-related? Just the movement of gangs or, you know, why all of a sudden did we, it seemed like all of a sudden somebody ratcheted up the game?
And interestingly enough, many of the things that you said were things that came up about, "This is happening because of everybody's been indoors. Now we're out." I think the one thing that most of the employees agreed upon was there is way too much guns and way too easy access to guns themselves. And again, some of them who were more senior related that when they grew up and you had a fight, you went around the corner and you boxed it out, and that was it. Now, when you have an issue, it seems like guns are the way to answer that issue. So it was very interesting to see that they were. But again, I think, back to your earlier point, that the frustration of why is this happening does seem to have many sort of ways that people think it's happening. But the answer is, it is happening a lot more. And so that's why I'm trying to work with the police, because I think everyone has recognized there is no one absolute answer. That we just do this, everything will go away. And so that's why there are continued meetings and continued work with the partners who can have some things along with the counseling, the police, what we can do, mental health. But again, I think it's going to be an ongoing issue that we're going to have to pay attention to for what appears to be quite a while.
And we did, we did, after we had that, the meeting with the Youngs Terrace staff, we actually, I think, the following week, we had a meeting with the Norfolk police there. I think with the Deputy Assistant Chief that we met with and some of the officers that were already working on the ground. And there's some of the information that they could share with us publicly that they were aware of. So I don't know if that's a, it's a coincidence that, you know, after the meeting, and I know Karen has been doing a number of things as well, that we haven't. It's sort of, we haven't seen the number of events that we have had. I don't know if there's any correlation between us meeting and anything. Karen, I think Karen's on the line if she wants to speak to that. Karen, if you could hear, if there's anything else you could add on that end?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Board and Executive Team. As I've worked closely with the chief's office of the CROs, there has been some leniency in the way that they're able to patrol the communities. As it got closer to school, starting, the CROs were freed up some. I do have to be a realist and understand that as significant events occur or other, what they call intelligence items throughout the city occur, they may get pulled. But I have stressed the importance of the CROs being in our communities, engaging with our site staff, our managers, and our residents. Within the last two to three weeks, I have seen that that has increased. So I'm very thankful for that. One of the other things that we're continuing to do, and Mr. Jackson alluded to it, is that to make sure that my staff has boots on the ground. We're now in a time that we need to be making with the community, and especially one-on-one. These families that we're trying to balance, so we don't have to evict them. We're trying very much to have safe, in-person meetings with them and provide the services or recommend services for those families to stabilize them. That is very important right now coming up. School is now back in session. These groups that were separated because of school are now back together. So I'm getting intelligence from Norfolk Public Schools on situations that may spill over into our communities. So I think the biggest piece that we could play in this is to make sure that we stay engaged as much as we can, just doing it safely. And I appreciate the board's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Rose, you have something?
The person that was shot in front of the administration in Youngs was that he rushed it or he was standing with someone.
Be prepared, you know, the...
Okay, I'm looking at my Chief Commissioner Arrington. We had three shootings, actually two over in Youngs. Are you referring to the shooting over in, off of Brownson Avenue?
Yeah, that one.
Yes, yes, ma'am. That was not a resident. While there was some gang affiliation, as the investigators checked more, it was a domestic-related incident. It just happened to have some gang affiliation overtones.
Other comments? All right, thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. Will it allow, have commissioners' comments? Comments from Commissioner? Alfonso?
Yeah. Good morning, again, and to reiterate Chairman Masaccio's comments about good to be back together, I share that sentiment with you all. And just in way of the report that our executive president just gave, I think one of the things, Don, that, well, first of all, I think it's really exceptional for to hear that, how afraid they really were about some of these things. But then, I think the other thing that struck me is, I think, and tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jackson, because it seems that they also felt like there were a good deal of participation that put them at risk from some of the tenants. Am I right? That there were some tenants that contributed to some of the violence there, and it was hard to kind of nail them down. Their children, and then them standing up for people who didn't live there, but kind of claim were privileged that, "I'm visiting with, you know, Joe Schmuckatelli." And then they kind of stood up to that. I think there was some frustration on their behalf that they were, am I right? That they were able to express that. Here are my comments this morning to my colleagues on the board. And I kind of say this because there is such a thing as speaking truth to power. And I think what that means, and what it has always meant to me, was speaking clearly, truthfully, to people and institutions of influence, even though it may have some likelihood of reprisal or punishment or something associated like that. So that's the covering that my comments come with this morning. And I say that because I come highly discouraged. I won't say disappointed, but I'm more discouraged because nobody has any mandate to do the things that I feel like they ought to do as it relates to the board's role with policy and governance and that kind of thing. But from my perspective, I hold myself to a different standard because I have a perspective that's born out of being the object of a lot of these things that people that we serve experience right now. People that are poor and living poverty. I've never ever lived in public housing. I've never, my family has never been on welfare or gotten food stamps. I don't even think food stamps existed when I was coming up. I really don't. My mother, you know, if we were to kind of raise her back from the grave, I don't think she even knew how to apply for public assistance. We were poor. We were below the stretch line. And that's how we live. We live below the stretch line, doing the kinds of things that it took to make it day by day. So I have a sensitivity about some of the things that I see our residents go through right now and what they experience. And I know some of my colleagues don't. And so their understanding of how that impacts people is different. And I don't hold them to task for that. I understand that all of us have different life experiences. And then all too many instances, that drives, that informs, that fuels our response and understanding of things. I am frustrated at how often people who are in possession of power and influence get into these circumstances with poor people, extremely poor people that don't have resources or don't have advocacy. They don't have the same resources that people of influence have in order to exact punishment, retribution, change, and all of those kind of things. But we always end up making the poor folk the enemy. And I don't understand that. I mean, I really don't get that. I mean, you know, we have all of the influence on our side, so to speak. And I talk about influence. But somehow, the expectation that we would behave a particular kind of way or that we would consider people and their status as people deserving of respect, dignity, and those kind of things. That idea seems to be something that is foreign to a lot of us. And I don't understand that. And it troubles me because... Uh, and, and I don't understand that. And it, and it troubles me because, uh, you know, because of, we have been given a charge. And, uh, in the context of this charge, we have a responsibility to provide a service. Uh, we are afforded resources to, to provide their services and we're expected to do so, uh, in a certain way. And, and consistent with that, we have to, we're held accountable by the funder, AKA HUD and City and those kind of things. We're held accountable by the community, AKA, uh, city leaders, you know, politicians, uh, all those kind of people. And then the residents have a level of accountability. I think they try to exact on us. And we always end up getting in the fight with the weaker vessels, the, the lesser, uh, entity in that equation, the poor folks that we are serving. And that's where we exact our punishment. That, that's trouble. And, uh, and it troubles me because, uh, that is the low-hanging fruit. That that's the, the group that doesn't have an advocacy. That's the, the part of that equation that can't bring punishment back. Uh, and they just kind of have to like it or lump it, just take it or keep it moving. And, and I know that there are some rabble-rousers and there are some, uh, people who kind of stir things up and, and, uh, cause problems by telling lies on and about staff, by misrepresenting facts in various situations, by stealing, by, uh, taking things that don't belong to them in community, by, uh, misrepresenting their, uh, eligibility reports and requirements, saying this person, uh, doesn't have this and this person does. I, I understand all of that. Uh, but it's one of those things that me personally, I just, and I know that nobody else, the staff doesn't, my other colleagues on the board, you don't have any obligation to take any of that into account. The staff doesn't, our Executive Director doesn't. Nobody has any accountability to take any of that into account. Uh, but I do. And so I'm always tagged as the villain because I do. I understand how the staff feels about me. I know that. Uh, but, but please note this morning that that's the size of the, uh, scale that I'm going to be on. Every time we, we meet, that's where you're going to find me. And I'll say this one last thing, Dr. Jane Tom, uh, very, very, very well-known theologian who, uh, kind of advanced the practice of principles of, uh, not social justice, but, but, uh, something akin to that when we, uh, talk about our theology. Uh, and he, he gets that from Reinhold Niebuhr, who said, "You will always find Christ on the side of the poor." And, and not on the side of the affluent. Not on the side of the people with positions of influence. Not on the side of money, but on the side of the poor. And so for me, that's a good side to be on. Uh, and so with that, uh, I'm going to conclude my comments by saying, uh, to our team, our collective team, to my colleagues on the board, uh, to all of our executive team who have to carry out these policies and, and make things work after we muddle them up real bad. Uh, please note that, you know, I, I guess I will be the enemy until my, uh, the last ounce of service I provide is provided. Uh, because I'm going to constantly find myself on the side of advocating for those who have no representation and influence, uh, to, uh, serve them. So with that, Chairman, I, I conclude my comments.
Thank you. Uh, other comments from Board? All right. One other thing, want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Dillard on his new, uh, opportunity. So congratulations, Joe.
Thank you, thank you, President.
Thank you. Uh, so.
Those things are for you this morning.
Uh, being, being out of town, what is this new, uh, opportunities?
Joe?
Um, I'm now the, I got a new position. I'm the Director of Equitable Innovation and Legislative Policy at Richmond Transit Company.
I couldn't hear for a minute. I'm sorry.
You don't have to spend a minute.
Can you repeat your title?
Uh, the Director of Equitable Innovation and Legislative Policy at the Richmond Transit Company. So, you know, with everything going on, the workforce is changing. So it's a, it's very favorable, it's a hell of a work moving forward. So I don't, I, I'm moving, but I don't know when. I told Don and, uh, Alfonso in the email that when I'm like within sixty days of knowing that I'm going to move, I'll give you guys a heads up so you can start maneuvering, how you need to maneuver. But it's not going to be like, uh, a two-week notice. I don't know when I'm moving, if I am moving. But right now it's like, uh, two days in office one week, one day next week, so.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah.
But also, you know, there's a cheer in there for the rest of us.
Really two brilliant, uh, well, two very bright, uh, up-and-coming stars, uh, with Joe and also, uh, Ruth, uh, Joan Nessel, the food bag cheese eating.
Yeah.
And, uh, taking one of those positions, so that's, uh.
I'm proud of you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm proud of him too.
My work, I don't want to say my work's here is done, but it's coming to a close, Ken. And it's going to be a transfer of experience.
I'll see you on one of those stops on Broad Street someday.
You definitely will. Boy, if you're ever in Richmond, give me a call. There are a lot of bars there.
Yeah.
Yeah. On that note, do we have any other, uh, comments? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to the agenda. And that is, I can scroll down. Page fifteen. Which now has the, uh,
Finance.
Finance book. I'm sorry, I got, my finger's not fast enough.
Contract report. No, did I do it?
Yep.
Wanted the contract report.
Yeah, Finance and Administrative Operations. They've got all of those reports. Are there any comments on those reports?
Just a, a question. I see, uh, the security, uh, uh, three-quarters of a million dollars there and we have police, um, at half-million dollars. And then, you know, th- there is a lot of money going to security.
Yeah, a lot, yeah, a lot of money.
But I think it's, one of those is in response to what we've heard is that the people feel that I could feel more comfortable if I see more
Yeah.
policing, whether it's Norfolk police or armed security or.
Yeah, that's what we're.
So we're responding to that particular sense that I, I as a resident and employee would feel much more comfortable with more visibility, uh, so that we're responding to that thing.
Yeah, I think that's a, a basic thing that we should be providing is security for, especially our clientele.
Yeah.
So does the security also include the cameras and the, uh, everything like that? Are you getting the, the.
And you mean in that dollar figure or separate?
Yeah, did you gather on it?
I think that's a separate, uh, Kathy can speak on that. They're, they're separate.
Yeah, the cameras are a separate project.
Security program.
And these would be for boots on the ground?
Yeah, and there are armed security that'll be going around to the families.
Okay. Did that answer, Twitty, bro?
Okay, just. I, I can add that the cameras, Ms. Arrington, are a separate project. It's already ongoing though. And we're actually in the process of seeking grants for additional cameras and funding for that. Okay. As a separate project. Okay.
Kind of thinking back to Don Dick, and I ask like, uh, I guess a overarching person kind of the big with Alfonso was saying earlier. So you can increase security. My uncle's a police officer, right? I don't think they go on the record as saying that they don't stop crime, they solve crime.
That already happened.
What are, what could we do to help the lives of everyone in that community rather than provide prison-style tactics? Prison-style tactics, if you put more police out there, you put more cameras out there. It doesn't help people get jobs. Young boys will shoot each other over simple, simple disagreements. But is it something that we can do with this funding rather than divert the half-a-million dollars to put more police out there that essentially won't stop a 3PM shooting? Like a, a police officer, I, I'm not just saying stand off of police. The crimes that we're witnessing happen at any time. Increase police presence, help solve crime. I think that what we're battling with now, based on social media shootings, isn't going to stop crime. So is there any programs or things in place that we have budgeted that can more so not just alleviate and protect the community that wants to feel that protection, but also bring along those people that live in the communities that he's talking about that are actively involved in some of the, the trouble?
Well, we, uh, uh, for example, like today we made, and I think a couple, uh, maybe our last board meeting when we gave a presentation on the, uh, the number of programs, primarily youth-oriented programs where, uh, where city funding that we normally get from HRB that supports the programs for, for youth, actually, Don signed it today and I passed it over to the Chair of HRB, Alfonso, like eight-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. So we know that's an important part of it because we, you know, we, we understand the connection between folks in terms of, uh, being unemployed or not getting a high school education. And they talk about the, that pipeline from people not being able to have sort of meaningful either training or employment and how, but that's the segment of the population that usually winds up in criminal enterprise. So we're trying to address that by providing more of those types of programs for youth, uh, so that there's more constructive things they could do as opposed to, you know, just not really sort of being aimless. So we are, we, we do realize that in our communities and we're trying to address that.
And I would just like to say, I know we're, we're, safety's number one. Well, people, people first.
Yeah.
But it seems like we're building, with the brighter lights, with increased policing, it's a prison outside of the prison. We would just perpetuate and build the same thing. We wouldn't, you know. If Don has a problem in Willoughby about speeding, Don gets out in the community and picks up signs and says, "Slow down asshole." Don, you don't ask for sixteen more police officers. You, you, you.
Well, that's one of the things we did hear in some of these meetings is, uh, that the folks think that more involvement in the community would, uh, be a tool to meet the part you're saying, which is to stop the crime before it starts.
Right.
And so we're working with, uh, the reluctance to, for folks to be, to come involved. And I think Ron mentioned the anonymous phone tip lines. Those kinds of things as a tool, uh, as you said, to, to work on this end of the spectrum. Because we already know what happens on this end of the spectrum. And so, uh, jokingly say that this issue is not arithmetic. You're not going to add one thing and get the correct answer every time. But, uh, we are trying to work with that and, uh, get the communities to feel more comfortable bringing forth information. Because that's one of the things we heard is that if, if I say something, you know, because we always say, "See something, say something." And if I say something, people will know that I'm the one who did that. And then I will become the target. So I think we've got to work on that particular piece of it to have people feel more comfortable becoming involved. Yes, Ruth?
Uh, sometimes I think we try to decide a lot of things that we think is the best. I think there should be a survey sent to the community that they are being attacked like this. And they are more, they know more what they need than what we know. They might say, "Well, we might need, uh, more lighting. You might need something else." It might, might not be this, "All these millions of dollars slipped to the police." It might be something very simple. I think we should need to do a survey and find out what they really need.
And as part of our effort, I know, like I said, you know, with the pandemic has sort of hampered our effort to be able to, to meet, to have the larger-scale meetings and.
They don't have to have a meeting, I think, to just send it out.
Yeah, but, but one of the things we are doing is that, and Karen had talked about as well, is we're having like smaller meetings to actually engage them. Because even doing a survey, you still want to follow up and, and just hear from, from residents because there's some things you can glean from a survey, but there's things that you really can't. You really have to listen to some of the things that more, it's more open-ended kind of questions that you could hear, that may be a common thing. But those are the kind of things you get in person. But I agree with you, that could, that would help as well.
Because I lived in these and they were shooting left and right and at night you couldn't sleep. I could, we could be up two feet and the gun back there was, I saw a police ride through, but sometimes the shooter would be there. They had to try to find out where the shooting was.
Right.
And, and it wasn't the presence of the police. It was just that, it was things that needed to be done internally where, like you said, somebody needed, if they knew something was going on, they needed to report it. And that's where the problem was. They needed to report it. And then it's got to be a safe way that they can report it. Um, if somebody hear you whispering, uh, so-and-so, because the walls are thin and, and telling texts, it might be better, but you got to remember people can, uh, infiltrate those texts. And it's just, it's just a, uh, i- if you live in it, you'll know that police presence are okay, but not that great.
Yeah, because even though, when we had the meeting with the young terrorists, I think that's one of the things that they, one of the, one of their questions was, is there a better way for residents to be able to report information, you know, criminal or things that they, that could possibly go on in a community? They reported anonymously, because they were hearing that the existing ways, like tip lines and things, like they didn't feel safe even doing those. And so that's why one of the, one of the, our responses is that we're trying to work on an intense platform for residents to feel, to feel safe. Because even in our meeting with NPDA, they talked about, they tried to encourage people to, you know, report on these tip lines and things with, and hearing from our, our staff, they said that the residents tell them they don't feel safe even doing that. So, yeah.
Are you guys going to collect data on this? Because I, I will venture out to say something that's just probably opinionated based on culture. I think when you increased police presence twenty years ago, and I'll lay it on Paul Fongler to clarify this, because I consider him in my, in my culture, a OG. Um, twenty years ago, if you increased police presence in our communities and not just African-American communities, there was a leadership there. Now it'd be, uh, it was legal or not, drug laws, that you're making it harder for us to make money. So you need to chill out, right? And that was like the way twenty years ago. Now, that structure with the younger shooters doesn't matter. So where twenty-five years ago, people that were trying to get money in those neighborhoods would relax on the violence because you didn't want increased presence. Doesn't exist today because it's not about getting money. It's because, Don, you commented on my Facebook post and said that I was a bust. And no OG or older person out there trying to make a living because they, of their circumstances, has influence like that anymore. And that's my guess. That's my hypothesis. So I would ask that we keep, try to track the data on this increased presence.
Okay.
Is it really making an impact? And I would go as far to say, I don't think so, because based on our culture, the structure of enforced police presence really wasn't because the police were there. It was because, you know, you're stoning up or you're making it harder for us to make money in this community.
May I, uh, follow up on that just, uh, briefly? Uh, tell you how important you are. Uh, tell you how important you are, uh, nine, two thousand and nineteen, I believe, there. Real proliferation of, uh, killings going on from Berkeley to, uh, Park Place. You know, you know, it's more. We called a summit with the gang leaders, Getsemane, at the church. We had the two alpha males at Getsemane, uh, to call the troops. And as we talked to them, we said, can we get you to commit now to call the troops to this killing? And you know what the, uh, leader said? They looked at each other and they looked at us, told us how much they respected us doing that. Then they said, a lot has happened. So we will give you our word that we will move from here to do everything we can, but a lot has happened. And here's, here's what they are saying. The police weren't even in the equation they were thinking about. You know, it's, it's the things that they had happened between each other. And they had maybe one or two smaller incidents after that, but they were able to get it under control. And I guess for, uh, somewhere around six months, they, they tapered it right off. We didn't do the follow-up like we were, uh, committing to do, and that was more about church politics. But, but, uh, it was a major deal and, and one of the reasons we didn't was because the media heard about what we had done and they wanted to start coming around asking. And we didn't want it to look like we were exploiting these young men for media purposes. And so we, we just backed away from talking to the media about it and, uh, didn't have the follow-up. But you're absolutely right, that's what they respect. When you're in power, uh, and, and they are able to see people in the community that are empowered and they're empowered, you have to lead them toward the right decision.
I think, Joe, you're really mentioning how things have changed. We're now in a metrics society. And I think it's absolutely on our part to say, we're spending this money to get an outcome. Are we getting the outcome that we're spending the money for? Because as, just in this little conversation that we've had, you've heard five or six different ways of infecting the overall metric, which is reduction in crime. So I think you're absolutely right that we need to keep an eye on this and look at things like Rose was saying.
Right.
You know, see it, you know, ask it, what do you think ought to happen? Kind of thing and, and see if those things, we can align with that. So I, I, I think it's absolutely correct.
Sure.
Uh, other comments? Okay, then I'll ask Ms. Mose to come up and talk to us about electronic signatures.
Great morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Ms. Barnes, Mr. Jackson, I'm here this morning to present to you the resolution for the electronic signature policy for North Carolina Development Housing Authority. And when this policy started, it was at the onset of the pandemic. And at that time, we did not have a policy to obtain electronic signatures. And we were in a stay-at-home status. Um, so we started on a policy at that time. HUD did not have guidance for electronic signatures, so we were kind of winging it and researching and putting a policy together. Uh, we got the policy together and lo and behold, HUD came out with H twenty dash four, which was guidance for electronic signature policy, storage and transmission of all electronic documents. Uh, so what I was able to do was to put a document together to obtain electronic signatures for the agency. Everything is included in this policy except public and Indian housing and the home program. Uh, HUD did not provide guidance for those two programs, so they're not included and as a matter of fact excluded by this policy. Um, HUD provided guidance. And so what we did was put together a policy. And at the end of it, because HUD came out with guidance for storage and transmission, I added that to the policy also. So the policy includes electronic signatures, um, electronic storage and electronic transmission of documents, uh, containing electronic signatures. It also provides guidance on how to, um, um, execute those electronic signatures, whether it's through PDF, Adobe, and you can just stamp it, or if you sign it, or if you sign it and scan it. Um, those signatures are all acceptable. Outlined in the policy, um, it is very clear what departments and divisions will have to do, however, is if they choose to utilize this electronic signature, um, they create their own procedure to execute documents. Um, so if we're using Adobe PDF or if in the long term, we decide to get an electronic, um, document management system that will accept these signatures, that procedure will be introduced by a set of procedures per the department. Um, and that's pretty much it, cut and dry, electronic signatures. We're just hoping to move forward with approval of this resolution.
Uh, it is rather lengthy.
Yes, so is HUD.
But, uh, I guess a couple of very basic questions. Is this going to make life easier for A, employees, B, the residents?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, when HUD, our policy when we started, did not include, um, HCV and, um, occupancy for the use of the documents from clients and residents. Um, and when HUD came out with their policy, it did include, um, HCV and public housing. And it gave us the opportunity to accept signatures and store documents from clients and residents. And as we continue to telework in this teleworking environment, it also gives the employees an opportunity to continue to do work and transmit documents without having wet signatures.
Okay. Uh, questions and comments?
Thank you.
Well, welcome to the new world, I guess, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, uh, on page forty, we have the resolution. What do we need to do?
Just a motion and a second.
All right. Uh, take a second to look at page forty. It talks about the resolution, which basically says, we think this is a good idea. Uh, and so the recommendation is to approve.
Yes, sir.
So I will, uh, without, if there are no further comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Slow move.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Barnes?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Benatsky?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Masaja?
Aye. Thank you very much for putting this together.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day.
You do the same. Yeah. I have several really bad jokes about technology. Yes, I will not. I will show my maturity by now.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have, uh, uh, Scott, I think is going to talk to us about, uh.
Do you want to talk about the charge off? That's number four?
Well, yes, Donna, tell us about the charge off, my favorite.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Donna.
That's why I walked down here. I figured there may be some questions.
Yes.
Um, so as you will see for the write-off period ending June fourth, the numbers are starting to go back up. We had a year of very low write-offs because of the addiction moratorium. We are now starting to see families either skip out of the unit or were able to get possession because they've abandoned the unit. So this quarter, it was at thirty-nine thousand, eight twenty-three. Um, several of these residents owe six or plus more months of rent, so that's why it's high. We've already received the next quarter write-offs for about thirty thousand, so we're out in line with where they were at for this quarter. And I do expect that trend to continue. Now that the moratorium is set to expire October the third is where we're looking at right now. And you have some data on the age receivables. I don't know if you want to do that now or wait until I do the quarterly report.
Uh, I'll leave that up to you, whatever's comfortable for you.
Okay, I can go ahead and present that, that information. And I have some numbers for you if you would like to hear this more. And as far as our delinquency rate, uh, this is through the end of August. Uh, we are actually at four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that is delinquent. Uh, that's five hundred and forty-eight families throughout our community. Two hundred and twenty-five of those families only owe the month of August. So we have about three hundred and twenty-three families that owe more than one month's rent. Out of that, we have three families that owe more than ten thousand dollars. Two of them have applied for rent relief funding. We're just waiting for that information and that funding to come back. One has been non-responsive, so we'll probably have to take some type of action against that resident. We have fifteen families, um, that are over five thousand. So technically, if you take the three out that are over ten, we have twelve more families that are between that five thousand and ten thousand, um, mark. Seven of those families have applied for funding. Uh, three are working on getting their application in now, and two have been non-responsive. So what we're seeing is most of them are working with us. We're getting applications in for funding assistance. And the hope is that we'll get this money in. It's taken a little while. Uh, we've done some applications a while back. We haven't received the funding yet. So now it's taken a little bit longer than we hoped. But we are seeing more residents now coming in and working with us to get their application in for their funding. Any questions about any of that information?
Just one real quick, Donna, on the clarification on the electronic signature. My understanding is that doesn't apply to, uh, the resident, does it?
Um, that's the most likely question.
Oh, okay.
I thought it does.
Yeah, that's good. That's good, good, okay.
Yeah, makes life easier for everybody.
Yes. So over the last twelve months, we've been reconciling these people that, uh, flew under the cover of the, uh, addiction. And so are we, now that's over with, are we seeing people responding and saying, well, let's work on a payment plan? Are you?
Yeah. So we have right now four families that have actually signed a term agreement with us. The term agreements we set up that, um, we will, we want them to, to set up a payment plan. And they're applying for funding as well. And so once the funding comes in, we will void out the term agreement if it pays off their entire balance. We are seeing more of that as October third comes up. And as the numbers I shared, we didn't have that many families that have applied the last one that I spoke to these. So we are seeing an increase of that.
It seems like something, this whole policy just, and I understand the intent of it. Man, it is just creating some major hurdle for people, uh, living in public housing and that stuff is building up on them and just seem like they're just putting more, uh, lead on the end of the hammer. So when it does hit them, uh, rather than getting them with crack, just going to crush them. I mean, that's, or some, some public policy for me is just creates an opportunity to.
But, but Alfonso, doesn't this, this, uh, funding that has been very hard to get, and it's really too bad how much money has been sitting on the sidelines, but i- isn't that meant to take that lead out of the pencil? I mean, out of the hammer?
Oh, yeah. That's, I'm saying, but, but when you consistently bring the moratorium back, see, all people here is, I don't have to pay right now. Am I right? And they just, whether they got the money or not, they, they jump on the side of, I don't have to pay. So, so I could have paid the three twenty-three when it was up there. I know that's not the amount of number of people. But I could have paid three hundred and twenty-three dollars a month in rent, but, but when I, I'm out of it, now nine hundred and sixty-nine becomes due. You know, now it's, it's a lot more burdensome for me. And, uh, so I'm going to try to avoid paying that. And then they say, you know, I'm easily moving out, leaving a big debt or fighting that somebody told me I didn't have to pay or, I mean, it just keeps building up. But I know the intent and, uh, you know, noble intent, but you know, what they say, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And so, uh, you know, I.
It's been very challenging.
Yeah.
The residents, for people in general, for the housing authorities.
Yeah.
We are continuing to do all we can. We're getting the information out there. We have to save ones, that we're here to help you. Uh, and, and we have many residents that are taking advantage of that. We have some that, um, are not. They, they are just pointing out like saying, I'm not paying you any rent. And when this expires, do what you have to do.
Then make the decision then.
Right. And we've had, as I mentioned with others, we've had people abandon their units after multiple months of not paying any rent. So you have a mix. Right now, it's looking like we have more that are working with us than we have that don't, which is toxic. Um, when the moratorium expires next month, uh, everyone that has the balance that we have not received funding for should be put on a term agreement. And so we will be seeing a lot more of those set up. And then if they just refuse to work with us, we'll have to look at taking next step actions.
I think the key is to make sure that, I don't want to paint everybody with the brush of those who abuse the system. So I want to make, make sure that we have those things available for those who were impacted by it. And make sure that we work with them. And then we've got a process for those who come their nose in.
And everyone that, um, is on this list, the manager of this reached out. I get a report every month what contact has been done with that resident, what efforts have we supported. We have all of that for every month just to start.
Yeah, and I think a lot of folks share the frustration that, you know, eighty or ninety percent of the money that was set aside to do that has not been sold out, so.
I was thinking, is it three families, is it three families who've been non-responsive, over five thousand?
Aye. Yes, sir. Over five thousand, over five thousand is three. Um, and I think the one that's over ten thousand, that's the largest amount that's owed. Um, has pretty much made the statement that I said that they're not claiming the tax.
Yeah, my concern, not to them, but for those who are just willingly taking advantage and know they're not going to pay.
Non-responsive, those three, yeah.
Well, we have a process for them. So again, the key is make sure those who would benefit from the programs, understand them, we help them get that benefit. And for those who don't, there's a process for dealing.
Will they feel discouraged? And this is my ignorance. So if they don't hear backwards, is there a possibility about the additional funding that's sitting there? And you guys put them on a term. Will they still, will they feel discouraged or will they still know that it's still a possibility that that funding can come, it's just on a later timeline?
We'll make sure that that information is shared with them. In the term agreements, we're going to, I think the other concern they may have is paying their rent now and that term agreement amount. We are making sure for each resident that those amounts do not go over forty percent of their income. So it's still affordable for them. So there may be very long-term agreements, because normally we only do a twelve-month. But with COVID, at the beginning, we said we would extend that time period to make sure that their payments would never exceed the forty percent of their income.
Thank you.
Donna, is any of those, the residents that have arrears, are they eligible for any of that funding that's out there? Because I know at one time it said if you're already receiving assistance, you couldn't, but now that.
The new, the last release of funding is anyone, even if you're receiving assistance for their portion of their rent. So if it was a housing authority voucher participant, not for what we pay and have paid, but both their portion, they would be eligible.
Right. And I know, I think we have been encouraging them to do that.
Yes, we have.
Great.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Donna. All right, I think Scott, come on up and tell us about the new financial statement.
Uh, well, this is the, well, since I've been here, this is the first time we're presenting financials. And I know that, you know, with the board, you know, being a commissioner, uh, various things that, your role that you play as being commissioners, you know, just making sure that the housing authority is operating successfully, operationally satisfactory, which we have been providing reports on that. But in terms of the financial performance of the organization, we haven't been doing that. And that was also brought to light, uh, highlighted in the tag report. So we've been working and coming up with a format that, uh, that we could present to the board. On a, I guess that now is it monthly? We're looking at monthly. We're looking at monthly, a monthly basis. So you can get an idea of the financial performance of, of the organization, which is really important, especially in light of, you know, the budget challenges that we're having. So Scott has prepared, Scott and his team have prepared financials for, for the month of July. And today is just really going to serve as sort of an orientation on what's in the report. And we did have the opportunity to present this to the Budget and Finance Committee as well.
And for commissioners, on page 45 of your presentation is where the financial highlights and all that start, page 45.
All right. Good morning, all.
Good morning.
When we saw this in, in the TAG report, Mr. Jackson first does with coming up with a model and a methodology to provide the board with financial reports and financial statements. This is an industry standard within the public housing industry to provide this information. So it was not a surprise that we saw it in the report. Each agency, if you have access to their board report, there is no set format for doing this. Some agencies look at it by annually, some quarterly, some at a very high level. In my former life consulting, I worked with one in Atlanta, Georgia, where we spent three hours with the committee every month. And we were down to the amount of maintenance materials that were being used at sites at a board level. So I've seen it very high level. I've seen it very detailed. What we wanted to try to do was to get a format here that worked with this board and that was, that staff was comfortable with to prepare. Mr. Jackson found a very nice package online from the Housing Authority City of Tampa, Florida. When we reviewed that, we found that this was very readable, A. And secondly, the CFO there prepared a cover memo to the statements, which almost more importantly than the statements. Even in my review, looking at her numbers, it answered all my questions before I could ask them. So the goal we wanted to try and come up with was to prepare a statement that's readable. And with the primer that you'll see in the memo, which I'll get to in a moment, shows you how to read them, what it means as we move forward. But then the memo every month, the intention of the memo is to highlight for you areas within the report to essentially answer your question. Why are the maintenance costs high at sites? If you get into that level of detail. Well, if it's a significant variance or a significant item, you'll find it in the memo. So that way, we're all, you know, we're all on the same page. What I've given you this morning is our operations, our operating projects. So you've got public housing projects, you've got the Rad projects, our housing tax credit project, and three of what John uses to call the lucky seven. You have Merrimack, Oakmont, and this building. Everyone's very interested in this building. So that statement's in there. I don't want to get into the numbers per se, just to highlight for you how this works and ask for your feedback. My staff, I want to, on the record, give a very, very big shout out to my staff. This was a pretty heavy lift. We have to get our financial statements to HUD unaudited for the end of the fiscal year by August, which left us really, what, around three or four days to try and put this together behind that. Staff did it. My accounting manager, Ophelia Schuster, is a wizard with Excel. And she was able to take two to three very diverse reports, put them together, and give me a mechanism to get this out in a, in a very simple manner. So we prepared it and we had, this time, and we will going forward, there will be five members of the staff, depending on what the content is, that will be on the review team. We plan to always have a three or four day build within preparation of these statements for people to look at their individual areas so that they can help me to put the memo together to you to get you the most relevant information that, that we can do. I would point you in the memo to the second page, where you will see a section called walkthrough of financial statements. I'm not going to go through that unless you'd like me to. But as you read through that section, that will tell you, and I reference everything to the Young Carers section or statement because it's the last page in the package. I figured the flipping would probably be easier that way. And it will tell you what is in general expense. Because that can be a question you ask right away, well, what do you have in general expense? So I wanted to put a primer in there so that everybody can see the categories and see what's in individual categories to help you as you, as you read and understand the statement. It explains the variances, what's good and what's bad. It explains how to read the bottom line. Well, you know, the real point of this is, when you go into the year-to-date, year-to-date actual, how are we doing? And that's the goal of this, is so that we can see within operating projects, overhead projects, or anything we determine that we want to look at, we can see how we're doing. And not necessarily how we're doing against that budget, but how we actually do it.
And Scott, that actual walkthrough starts on page 46.
Right.
And it does give you, this is what's at the top, this is what's in the middle, this is what's at the bottom.
Right.
Yeah, it's very good.
Thank you. Below that, you'll see general notes to all the statements. July is the first month because of the way HUD makes us do approvals, July input being very light. So the results look very good. But I, so I wanted to highlight you, you know, to that right away, that that is always a function of July. And then I gave you notes for each of the individual categories. That will stay within the format. I will leave that primer and walkthrough in the memo monthly as long as you want it to be there. I know it's a page and a half and it makes it bigger. But until, you know, I, I guess my goal here is for, first off, the committee and the full board, as we do this, as Ron knows, because he's seen the whole thing, I can double the size of your board report with this. And I don't think anybody wants that. But I do want to hear, Scott, we want more here. Scott, we don't think we need that. In your public housing section, for example, you've got a sheet that shows all of the projects laid up against each other, added up, and then against the aggregate budget for the program. Behind that, there's a statement for every single project, if you don't want that. So as, as a board, you, you know, that, that feedback will be good for us so that we can present this to you in a format that you like it.
Scott, the one thing that you did, I think you mentioned it in our finance committee meeting the other day, the way that you're showing revenue as being negative is very disconcerting for me.
We can...
If you can reverse that, so that...
Yeah, we, we can look, the, the system produces it that way. Right. So what we will do, and I'll change the primer for the next month, is I will, I will have staff work on what they need.
Good.
So that it all looks that way. I agree.
We, we need to see, a, a negative number needs to be a negative number, a positive number needs to be a positive number.
Yep, we can, we can...
And then make that change. And then an expense with a positive number is okay. Because all you care about is the bottom line.
Yeah, and that's why I had to explain in the primer why a negative number of $191,000 is a very good thing.
Right.
And that, so that, that's a function of accounting, the credits, the revenue is always a negative number. So it comes out of the system that way. We'll be able to work within the Excel and we can flip all that.
And, and look, this is, this is, TAG was absolutely on point in this. And I know you've been a big advocate of this, Scott. And you have to break it down like this. But we have so many operating that, and really what our, what our observation army based on are problem childs. So for us to see every one, every month, is probably not necessary. What we need to do is see the backup behind your comments. So if you saw, what, what, how many operating budgets, we got 20? 40?
20, yeah, upwards, 40 and above.
Okay, 40 and above. So if there was eight of them where there was a gut, we got a problem. If we had those along with your comments, I think that could give us sufficient focus. Right. So we don't get drowned in all the details.
Okay.
That'd be my comment.
Yeah, no, that's a fair point. We, we can do that. Um, as I said, we purposely gave you the operating projects the first time out.
Right.
Uh, because that, that's easier to look at than the central office all put together. But that's where the problems budgetarily are, is, is within the development side, central office.
Exactly.
And so, yeah, we'll, we'll find a way to work those statements in. Maybe I'll go with the summaries on the operating projects going forward.
Right.
And we can, again, we developed this, and again, thank you, Ophelia. We developed this to the point where we, we think that Donna's staff could call and say, where am I on project X? And we'd go click, click, and send it. So it, we wanted to develop it, develop it so that it covered the board level requirement. But we also wanted it to be able to go down to an operating unit level to where it was like the manager of Young Carers, we're hoping can use this.
That's exact.
Okay, so that's, so it, it is going to be available. There's a, there's something in the Excel called a slicer that was put in. So we go click, click, and Young Carers comes up. We go click, click, the City of Tower comes up. It's very easy for us to do. It's very easy to maneuver. We get the blessing on this, then we're going to bring Donna's folks in and start training on it so that they know that when we put it up on the website every month, and everybody, that, that they can go in and see. You know, I'd really like to see how our trade public housing is doing. They can do it. And with a few clicks behind the spreadsheet, they can go to the line of detail behind it. That's all tied in. So it, it's a very, very good product that we can use global. But we, we did want to get your sign off on how it looks, make a good comment. This makes perfect sense to an accountant, but probably not to anyone else, that the revenues are negative numbers. So we'll flip that. We'll, we'll make sure that there's a, Ophelia's probably listening. So there'll be a, there'll be a change there, and we'll change that in the primer going forward.
Okay.
Okay. And then I haven't entertained any question or comment.
Comments, folks?
This, this kind of came out of thin air, so we want to make sure it works for everybody.
Yeah, yeah. So, so what, uh, what I hear you suggesting is that we have a summary. And would we have like the lucky seven summary of, of, of the good stuff? But then in your cover letter, you would say, take particular notice that, you know, this one, and maybe that one's expanded so we can see what's going on.
Yes, and, yeah, absolutely. And we also have, as Mr. Banassi pointed out, we've got some budgetary challenge areas. So we can certainly generate a statement on this format that highlights those areas and, and include that and then comment on how we're doing.
Okay. Um, furthering that question, talking about trouble areas, Digs, where we have construction going on, and all of a sudden there are change orders. How, how are you going to be presenting financials of ongoing capital improvement projects?
That's a great question, and that is, that's an enhancement that we need to look at. This, right now, is only operations. All right. We, we have a, we have a budget model in our chair where we compare the two. But this is an operating statement. So a further change order at Digstown would not show here. However, it's in the accounting system.
Right.
So a statement on the development of Digstown is possible to generate.
See, that's one of those hidden knobs that has been getting us. And I was taking interest in the security, the cost of security and various things like that above my pay scale. You know, I, I'm, I'm not thinking in those terms, but they really come back to get you.
And that is something we can, we can, now, there, the, the accounting of those costs does not match a development budget. Are you familiar with the development budget level, general conditions, et cetera, et cetera?
Thirty years.
It's all construction in progress as far as we're concerned. But are we or aren't we meeting our expectation or our budget if we certainly compare something?
Great.
Other comments? Ken? Is that it?
This is, this is exactly the kind of thing when I was in private industry and I had nine branches working, where you have to break it down so you can look, look for all the issues.
Yeah. This is great.
Thank you.
And again, thanks to the staff for putting this together with a relatively short timeline.
Absolutely.
Really do appreciate it. Ken?
Thank you so much.
Kidoki. Next up, we have, uh, I guess development. Dr. Clark?
Yes, good morning. What we're doing, hey, what we're doing now is including it in the, in the, in the, with the other reports. And if you have any questions, we can answer. One of the things I'd mention is because with city funding obviously not coming in the way we had hoped, the acquisitions are really not going to happen this year. I think we do have a little money left for Willoughby. So that'll probably be the only neighborhood that you would see unless the city decides to do something, you know, mid-year like they've done in the past. As far as dispositions, of course, they're normally low this time of year. But as we move to October, November, you'll start seeing those again. What we also started including, and you'll see it on the report, conveyances to the city. Um, these are at no cost, but this is just where the city is going to take the lead on development. And these parcels will be transferred off our books. When we know what the development is, we'll note it. In some cases, we don't know.
Okay.
And, and so Mike, you're talking about this list of Church Street downtown Fairmont having a new fire station?
Yes.
So we're conveying the property so they can build a fire station?
Yes. We, and quite frankly, with the Lafayette Boulevard and Fairmount area, we were directed to acquire specific properties years ago. And frankly, the fire station was one that they've been trying to do for a number of years. And they just now, um, they're just now moving forward with it.
Got you.
Other questions, comments for Mike? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I'll ask Ms. Mills to come back up. And the housing operations stuff is on, starts on page 86.
Good morning again. Um, so I will be presenting an overview of the quarterly report for the Housing Operations Division for the fourth quarter of 2021, which ended June 30th. As Mr. Montaschi has said, they start on page 86 of your packet. Um, you have detailed reports, but I'm going to highlight a few of the actions in each of the departments. And then we'll open it up for any questions that you may have. Um, so the first one is the Housing Toys Voucher Program for this period, again, ending June 30th. We had 3,845 participants in the Housing Toys Voucher Program. We added 30 new landlords to the program during the quarter and conducted a 1757, 1,757 housing quality standard inspection. We also received 63 emergency housing vouchers from the Department of Us. These vouchers are to assist families that are homeless, at risk of homeless, are dealing with some form, form of violence. And we've been working with our partner, our continuum of care partner, to get referrals for these vouchers and get these out and issued. Under the Housing Programs Department, you see the update from the CNI effort. That was from June 30th. You have more updated information that was provided in your packet for an update today. They also compiled and submitted the 2022 annual plan to HUD on June 60th. Um, I believe as of today, we still have not received the approval yet. Um, so we have taken it, said it is approved since we have the extension date that that's allowed. And then also for the Office of Economic Opportunities, they conducted employment outreach for 11 job opportunities and two training opportunities for contractors. Under the Buildability Management Department, we continue to have a number of leaks in water lines throughout our community. So staff has spent a lot of time correcting those leaks as well as assisting property management with term-based units and emptying units in top water gardens as they are relocated out of section. In the Property Management Program, we have 3,183 units. Our occupancy rate is 94.60 when you exclude top water gardens and Digstown. Our tenant accounts receivable was 5.23 at the end of June compared to June of 2020. We were at 1.76. So as I mentioned earlier today, we knew that number was significantly higher. And as far as terminations or evictions for that period, we had 16 at 0.65% compared to the fourth quarter of 2020. We had 50 at 2.04%, again, much lower. A lot of that related to the eviction moratorium. In the Client Service Department, we were happy to receive $137,500 grant from the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. That is to help us continue our out-of-school youth program. We also had staff that worked alongside with information technology to upgrade the Wi-Fi infrastructure in all of our mid-rotations and family communities. And as of June 20th, the department assisted 14,428 individuals as part of the summer nutrition program. So they were very good. For the Safety and Security Department, they worked alongside our communications... For the safety and security department, they worked alongside our communications department to roll out the Code Red messaging system, this is to ensure that our staff get alerts whenever there's an emergency situation going on. They also worked alongside information technology to install additional security and safety features in our community. And reviewing the trespass ban during this quarter, they have removed twenty-two additional individuals from those.
It's probably a good time to make that correction on the century.
Okay, you got my, my.
Yeah, you can go ahead and make that.
So earlier today, when you were discussing safety and security and the contracts, there was a note about the cost that was listed on that contract sheet. Just wanted to make comment that the first one, which said century for the seven hundred, it was seven hundred and some thousand dollars, that is not in the family community, that is the midrash courtesy officer. So many of you know, we have courtesy officers for many years in the midrages, they're unarmed, they're there when we're not there in the evening and on the weekend, so that seven hundred thousand expense is actually the midrash contract that was just rewarded to a new company. The five hundred thousand dollars on that sheet was the contract we have with the police department for the family community. So that is all of the departments under housing operations. We also included in our report an update from Design and Construction as related to the capital fund program, and their work, of course, continues to be out in Digstown and the Rad conversion, also doing a number of poverty repairs and upgrades in our other public housing communities. The staff, I have the directors and the managers on the line if there's any specific questions. I do want to thank them and their staff for the work over the last quarter, and then when I come back to you next, we'll be highlighting the periods of July through September of 2021. Can I answer any questions that you have, or is there any comments?
Questions? No, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, community engagement. Do we have anything left? No? Okay.
No updates from community, thank you.
All righty. Any new business? Nothing? Okay. You can see the committee notes, very interesting, which is updates, there are some that appear to be actually verbatim, which I will now be more cautious in those meetings.
As you should.
As I should. Sister Mary Thomas would be proud. Now.
Now.
So we're going to go into closed session if there are no comments on the committee meeting notes. Before then, I'll ask for a public comment, if there's anyone, public comment, virtual participants, if you would like to state your comment, please click on the raised hand icon on your screen, and you will be called upon. You can also type a comment into the question box on your screen as well. There's more, do we have anyone?
We have no callers at this time, but I'm going to check the lobby and then come back and check.
Please, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. We have no one in the lobby, and we have no callers on the line with our hand raised.
All righty, then I will ask Ms. Carnes to talk to us about closed session.
Yes, sir. Resolution convening a closed meeting on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. This resolves that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended, the Act, to discuss the following matters, which are specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code section referred to below. One, personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, performance, salaries, or resignation of employees of the authority as authorized by section two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-eleven-A-one of the Act. And two, consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding actual or probable litigation and legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel as authorized by section two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-eleven-A-seven of the Act. May I please have a motion?
So move. A second?
Second.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Montagio?
Aye.
All right, then we will do our typical, take a few minutes while we take care of all the technology and everything, reminding you not to discuss any business whatsoever during this time. Do I have to wait for the lady?
The lady's already gone.
Okay. All right, folks, Ms. Carnes?
Yes, sir. Resolution certifying a closed meeting on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-twelve-D of the nineteen fifty Code of Virginia as amended requires a certification by this authority that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore the bond, motion duly made and seconded be resolved that the authority hereby certifies that to the best of each commissioner's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting, and two, only such public business matters that were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the authority. May I have a motion?
So.
The second, please.
Second.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi? Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Chairman Montagio?
Aye. Got job for twelve? Any, any further comments? All right, then I will close and sit in for me. Thank you very much.